4:00 PM work session to order. Okay, Council colleagues. You've had the chance to review the agenda. Please let me know what items you would like to have further discuss or some more detailed information on. With that, I'll start to my right with Councilman Foote. You ready? Don, I can come back to you.
Can I come in last?
Okay. Okay, Councilman Banks? Thirty-three.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Okay, Council Lady Lindsey?
Council President, thank you. This is such a meaty agenda. I almost want to go over every item, but I will not do that. As one item, I would just like a little conversation on items two through eight, which are part of the consent agenda.
Item two.
Two through eight, but as one item, it's just one item.
Okay.
That's all the property stuff. And then item number twenty.
Twenty?
Yes, sir.
Twenty?
Twenty, and I just don't know what that is. And then, then item forty-two.
Forty-two.
And, and then item forty-six.
Forty-six.
Yes, sir.
That's all?
Well, for now, yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, sir.
Councilman Banks?
Yeah, I need to add to mine. I forgot, item fifty-one.
Item fifty-one.
Yes, sir.
Council Lady Lindsey? Councilman Foote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Timlin, I'd like to add items eighteen and nineteen.
Eighteen, nineteen. Okay, that's all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would like eighteen, twenty-one through twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, and items thirty-three through thirty-eight, then item twenty-nine and forty. Okay. Councilman Foote, item eighteen and nineteen.
Yes, sir. This is, both of these are introductions of ordinances from, that Councilman Banks is in charge of or overseeing or put on the agenda. And so, if he could summarize those for us, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mike Chick, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Foote, for bringing this up. The first one, as you know, we already have ordinance that, that will begin to dictate the operation of the internal audit committee. One of the things that we found with specifically the internal audit committee, based on some of the research that you handed to me, and some of the research we did at NLC, is that both of these functions, one had a strong legislative check, and the actual internal auditor was an independent office that reported to no one. And so, to make sure that those things that we'd be working on in committee, wanted to go ahead and put the amendments and the changes into the office of the internal auditor to make sure that it, to amend it, to make sure or establish it as a separate and independent office.
Okay, the, I want to commend you for this because I do think that it will, will be, go a long way towards building confidence within the citizens out there that the more independent we can make the office, I think it, it'll increase their confidence in city government.
Yes, sir. It, it will. And, you know, with all the council person and even mayors that I had the opportunity to talk to, they said one of the biggest things, the reason why they don't deal with it, is because it had to be independently of itself to help bring public confidence to the way the city handles its finances. And so, now, I appreciate you giving me the information on all those cities to begin to look through and read through. And I'm very optimistic about what this would do for our city.
Okay, and you have any comments?
I didn't have any other than that. Did you want to say something, Dr. Moore?
No, I don't have any comment.
Okay, so this is the introduction of ordinance. So tomorrow, we'll put this in, they put it in internal.
Yes, Mr. Timlin, what I would like to see done is introduce to put it in committee so that we can work on both simultaneously. So, like to put it in rules committee with the, the, because you know, the ordinance for the committee is in committee. So I want to put the one for the actual office of internal auditor in committee.
Okay.
I mean, yes, in rules committee. Yes, sir.
They can't put it in internal audit, internal audit, just one person from each.
Yeah, yeah, I misspoke.
Yeah.
In rules committee.
Rules committee.
Yes, sir.
President Timlin, legal would like to make a comment.
Excuse me. Good afternoon. I'm just getting on your phone from City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to make some clarification on some of the statements that you made, Councilmember Banks. We do have an auditing unit. However, it has been researched before, under the statute, they would still, even though they are independent, they still would be considered to be employees who report to the mayor. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, even though for the most part, they run by themselves. Under Mississippi statutes, they're not allowed to be like an independent entity or an independent group. So they are still employees who would report to the mayor's office.
Councilman Banks?
Yes, Mr. President. From my understanding, and if you will provide your notice and writing, the city of Biloxi, city of Hattiesburg, city of Meridian, have it set aside as a separate and independent office. And this is something that not only has state jurisdiction, Mississippi just seems to be a little behind when it comes to transparency, when it comes to how internal audit is supposed to work. And so, all of the research and the things that I have, I would gladly send it to you. But if you have an opinion, an official opinion on that, that stops this council from taking any legal action, please provide it from the Attorney General or from your office in writing. Other than that, other than that, we're going to put it in committee to discuss. And when it's in committee, we can hash those things out in rules committee.
I was going to say, I did do a little research once I saw that you placed it on the agenda, and I found that even some of your colleagues had actually submitted letters to the Attorney General's Office prior to this in hopes of creating exactly what you're speaking of. And at that point in time, that's when the Attorney General's Office also reminded the council members that these, that this group or these employees, even if it was an individual, would still be the responsibility of the mayor's office. So I'd be happy to provide that, but I'd love to see what you have, and so that we can move it forward.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on item eighteen? Again, this is introduction, and it would go in rules committee. And all important orders with information, please share with the committee. And when it comes out of committee, does in committee, we all on the same accord, because we want to do things that's legally. Okay, item nineteen, Councilman Foote?
Yes, sir. This is another introduction of an ordinance by Councilman Banks. I'll let him provide a brief summary.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. This is just to create a city ordinance that falls in accordance with state ordinance. One of the things that helps us to be able to do our job and provide more transparency as it is to handling the fiscal purse of the city of Jackson, is not only transparency, but being knowledgeable about what's going on. And so, state statute already demands that the clerk be provided on the first of every month with the financial position, performance, and expenditure and liabilities. That is statute 213513. And so, all I did was mirror a city ordinance so that not only is it enforced from a state end, because when we look at it, who from the city council wants to file any type of ethics report or anything against the city because they're not in compliance? So we have our own ordinance that follows in compliance with state law to make sure that we are getting financial performance, showing expenditures and liabilities with the city so that we can make sure that we're making informed decisions. Thank you.
Any other question, comments on item nineteen? Again, this is introduction of ordinance, it would go in committee tomorrow. We'll put this one in rules since, since we already did on items in, on finance in rules committee. Is that okay with everybody, Councilman Banks?
Yes, Mr. President, this one necessarily, unless, unless council sees anything that we might need to add, is pretty straightforward and stable. As I would ask, that it goes to the normal procedures, introduction of ordinance, and then the next two weeks after, it, it comes up for adoption.
Okay, do you, you have that ordinance you were talking about from the state?
It's in here.
Oh, okay. Okay, we have a recommendation from the auth of this ordinance, that it will roll over to the next committee, I mean, next council meeting, and become a lawyer if voted on favor. And, and a question, comments? Okay, this will be rolled over tomorrow to the next council meeting. That's all for Councilman Foote. Councilman Banks, item thirty-three, thirty-nine, forty-one, and fifty-one. Item thirty-three.
Yes, sir. Item thirty-three, this is, I assume, the emergency item that we've been waiting on with this, with this last winter emergency?
Yes. This items thirty-three.
Through thirty-eight.
Through thirty-eight are all related to the same matter.
Okay, okay. And are, are we pleased with the work that was performed by these contractors during this period?
Yes, I was quite pleased.
Okay, all right.
Very responsive.
Okay, all right. And this is a total amount of around $2 million?
If you add all of those five items together, it's $1,623,281.9. So a million six, and we've got about $400,000 or so of pavement repairs to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your attention to this. Hopefully, in the future, as you continue doing the work that you have done, we'll be able to, you know, get some local companies to begin to perform this work on an emergency basis. Since we know that in the winter, we're going to have this happen every year anyway. But thank you so much with your attention to this.
Ms. Miller, according to the, your records and documented, the number of calls concerning water breaks during the freeze, have you just about completed all those water breaks? Or how close are you to completing?
Oh, for, for, all of those water breaks have been, as we identified them at that time, were completed by early February.
Okay.
And so, we were very purposeful. Winter emergencies are profoundly expensive, profoundly expensive. And so, the, the important steps are see them coming, go into them quickly, focus on the work, and then come out of them just as quickly. Because if you don't come out quickly, you can find the meter running long after you think the emergency is gone.
Right.
And so, now, there's still things that are popping up that, that folks are pointing out. But as a matter of fact, you and I have discussed, discussed some. But related to the, that hard freeze event, the reaction from that shock of cold weather, yes, we, we had that wrapped up by early February.
Okay. Looking at what happened the last couple of years during the winter months with these breaks, until we get the infrastructure newly in place that will upgrade our infrastructure, do you think we would have constantly about the same number of breaks each, each, each winter, or more breaks each month, winter?
I will do my best to speculate, because I don't know that anybody can answer that definitively. But my belief is that as infrastructure ages until it's replaced, it only gets worse. It doesn't get better. But the things that we can become better at is, one is preparation for the winter emergencies, having our water treatment plants ready and maintained at a good level going into the winter emergencies, making sure that we have the distribution system. Remember, we had all those challenges with closed valves, making sure that we've got those issues resolved. And then being very quick to respond to water main breaks. But as far as the number of water main breaks, until we go in and replace those mains, I anticipate that it will get worse before it gets better.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure we prepare for those days.
We've got a lot of work that we can do and will do to get better related to winter emergencies.
Yeah. Ms. Miller, thank you as well for, for the work all you and your staff put together and the people you had to bring in during that period of time. Going forward, I'm curious if you have sufficient staff onboard within the Public Works Department to accomplish the many challenges you face. And if not, how many professionals do you need to hire to be successful?
That is the real question we're facing right now, and here's how we're going about it. First of all, we're making sure that we've got the right people onboard, people that we can count on. And we had challenges during the winter, and we've taken the necessary and appropriate steps to deal with that. Now, and so, with that, the question is how many people? The, the reaction that most folks want to give is, how many people did we used to have? Well, you know, back in 1980 or 1990, we had X number of people, so we need X number of people now. That assumes that we're not doing better as far as planning and scheduling, coordination, productivity, and all of those things. One of the initiatives that I'm kicking off next week, that's part of the consent decree project, but it's looking overall at the water sewer and drainage system, is called an organizational assessment process, based on what's called the Effective Utility Management Framework. And we're having a combination of, of consultants and volunteers from around the industry, my peers in the industry, who know how to run water sewer and drainage utilities. And they're going to come in and look at our organization structure, our business processes, and frankly, the number of folks that we have. I'm, right now, have dealt with a series of resignations in my staff that I'm going to be replacing them. But I'm also going to be organizing in such a way that we feel that we can be more productive. And, and while we're doing that, one of the key things that I want to build is a, the changes in organization culture that need to take place. Part of what we faced in going into this emergency is what I would consider to be almost patchwork or piecemeal repairs to kind of keep us going without solving the root cause of the problem. And so, with that, my intention is, this system is designed to operate in a certain way. It did not operate that way during the winter emergency because of all the jerry-rigged repairs that have been made to the system, both within the plant and within the buried infrastructure. And we've got to adopt a culture that says, no, it's not just enough to get us back up and running, but to get us back up and running in a sustainable way that can, where we can operate not only just for today, but when the temperature turns 15 degrees. And so, I'm kind of excited about that organizational assessment, and I look forward to bringing back the findings and recommendations of that study to you. But, but I need more people, and I don't know how many.
I guess a follow-up question would be, and you may not be in a position to answer this right now, but would be, is the salary structure that the department has built into it sufficient to find the, to be able to staff up the level of expertise and experience that you need to have?
No, sir. But there's a fine line between what the marketplace requires and what we can afford. And we're making the necessary investigations to find that appropriate balance between what it takes in the marketplace to get folks and what our customers can afford. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Appreciate your comments and your questions. I seem to be heading in the same direction as Councilman Foote, because we have tough decisions, budget cycle, to come across again. And we, it's better to be prepared for a certain amount of money. And so, when it comes to prioritizing and setting aside money, if we know that we're going to have winter emergencies in certain areas, if, if we know that staffing is not adequate, then, you know, we're going to have to look at some things, counsel, as far as redirecting and prioritizing, because the biggest buck of our problems is in the Department of Public Works outside of crime. And so, I appreciate you giving as much information as time going as you can on that. The other question I had is, is there any type of way where you can highlight where your troubled areas are when it comes to these type of issues? For example, if, if it's always going to happen on Magdal Road, if it's always going to happen in Presidential Hills, there's some type of way where we could be prepared or even have the citizens prepare, because we know that these are troubled areas that are most likely to pop when we have these type of emergencies come up?
There's a couple of things that we can do. First of all, in the long term, I want to build a geographic information system that can display that very quickly and easily, without somebody having to come and ask me a question. They can go to the website and see that type of information. Second thing is that we can identify where we've had problems in the past, and that's where we have to do a good job during the nice weather. Go out, find those closed valves, find those grid ties that have to be made. Third thing is, there's some things where we know where we're going to have problems. One area where we're going to have problems is, you've heard me talk about the peanut brittle mains that we have in Fondren and Bellhaven. We know that until those mains are replaced, we're going to continue to have problems with those. Also, we know in areas of South Jackson, the areas where we have high elevations, we're going to, when there's big demands from water main breaks, we know that we're going to have trouble getting water to the top of those hills, for example, Forest Hill High School and things like that. And so, what I want to do is, as, first of all, be doing the work right now to get the system in better shape going into the winter. Second thing is, we have to do a better job of communicating expectations. So much of the winter emergency, I would say, for all practical purposes, nearly all of our winter emergency response during this last, those last two winter emergencies were improvised actions that we took. There's no reason that, for us to improvise next time. We should have the processes in place, whether it's the processes for emergency contracts that we had to improvise, the processes for counting and reporting main breaks, the processes for greatly expanding the capacity of our 3-1-1 center, the processes for distributing water to people who were out of water at central locations, the processes for getting it to the homes where there were senior citizens or folks with mobility issues that couldn't come out to the water distribution sites. Winter emergencies, there's a, a lot to be learned and rebuilt into our processes so that we, we go in and we stand up and we're ready, and we're not reacting, we're acting rather than reacting.
You have any comments? Okay. Talk to me a little about, in the preparation, we got to have supplies. Supply houses need to stock up on certain materials that we know we're going to need. You just mentioned making sure that we have contractors already on notice and through great expectation also. Well, I, I, I guess one recommendation would be to have a meeting with the suppliers who we really depend on. I have some kind of communication with all the contractors that we depend on. How, how, how do you plan, plan to have a meeting with them?
Well, a lot of that, again, can be planned and scheduled. There are certain things that you know that you're going to have to have. You know you're going to have to have repair clamps for six-inch water mains, and eight-inch water mains, and 12-inch water mains, that we need to have those in stock. We have to have backfill material to put into place after we excavate. There's a, just a whole number of things like that that we have to have in place. And then we have to make the determination, how much of that are we going to stock in our own facilities versus how much are we going to ask our supply houses to stock? And to some extent, our supply houses know our business as well as we do, and they know that there's an opportunity to make a sale. But what we need to do is make sure that that is communicated, that we're not hoping that they're going to be there for us, that we know, they know how much we've got on hand and how much we're going to be looking for them to have on hand.
Good. Okay, very good discussion. Looking out for the future. Councilman Banks?
Item thirty-nine. This order authorizes an application for a water pollution control fund loan. Somebody kind of talk me through the high points of that?
Sure. Item number thirty-nine is an application for a revolving loan fund in the amount of $30 million for what's, what's called, it's from the Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund, and it is for investments that we need to make at our Savannah Street wastewater treatment plant as part of our short-term composite correction program improvements that are part of the federal consent decree. And, and so with that, basically, there's two different types of ways to describe utility infrastructure. Some folks use what they call vertical infrastructure, which is inside the fence lines. Some folks use horizontal infrastructure, or what I call outside the fence lines of a wastewater treatment plant. This is for improvements, immediate, short-term improvements at the Savannah Street plant inside the fence lines.
And so, we're talking about two consecutive years, $15 million? From what I see here, two city loans in successive years, each an amount of $15 million?
Yes, sir.
How, how are we going to pay this back?
That is intended to be paid back, my understanding, from the sewer rates.
So, and I just, I just want to make sure that we're careful in, in where we're going, because I know that on one end, there's a leveraging strategy with water and sewer rates to leverage the money that has to be paid into Tiger Grant, and then on this end...
Well, that, that's the municipal sales tax money for the Tiger Grant.
Okay, that's municipal, all right.
And this is for water and sewer.
Okay, what, what was that about leveraging, bond leveraging, the leveraging strategy with water and sewer fund?
I've heard that expression used mostly as far as the municipal sales tax collection. I haven't heard that used nearly as much for the sewer system.
Okay, all right. So with the Tiger Grant, how are we proposing to pay that back? The money, the money that has, our, our part of the money that we have to put into it, where was that coming from?
That is...
Over the, over the course of some years, we're supposed to put up so many million, correct?
That's correct. There's about $6 million that has not, that has been... There's about $6 million that has not, that has been, has not yet been identified what the source of those funds are, and that's something that we brought to, for discussion to the Municipal Sales Tax Commission at their last meeting, and we'll be bringing back to this full council here shortly.
So I guess is, I would like to see a healthy strategy in how we're going to be fiscally responsible in paying back bills. I don't want to see us continue to create bills on hope of good faith. You know, we got this Tiger grant thing over here, we got to make sure. And one of the things that we're talking about doing is leveraging or using money from water sewer, or, you know, what happens in water sewer, and that's not looking as good as it needs to look. And then even when we're looking at this, we're obligating ourselves to something. And so, you know, we're obligating ourselves to debt, which, the work needs to get done, don't get me wrong, but are we in a position to take on the debt? And how sure are we that our sewer collections will be able to do what they need to do to pay this back?
That is the thing that occupies the most of my time right now, is dealing with getting the water and sewer bills out correctly and then getting them collected sufficiently. And so, and right now, we are, one of the questions that Mr. Foot brought up a while ago is, how many more people do we need? And I mentioned, well, there's, how many more people can we afford? And that can be parsed out even more. How much can be afforded based off of our current problems that we have with our billing system and the collections? Then assuming we get that finished and get it resolved, then we're collecting the full amount, that allows us to hire even more people. Then we would look at a long-range plan, where should our rates be in the future, which is even a third tranche of people. And so right now, we are in the difficult dark days. You know, it's frequently said that it's darkest just before the dawn. Well, these are the very dark days on our billing and collection system. And so we're going to be working beginning in April to get that turned around. I'll have more details on that later.
You said April?
Yes, sir. As in, week after next.
Alright, so, and so again, because I want to be clear, because we're looking at a water sewer fund, about three million some dollars, right? We got to operate a public works department. We got debt service in June coming up, alright, to service some budget stuff. Then we're taking on debt, right? I just want to make sure that there's some type of plan, our communication with the Department of Finance on, are we realistically taking on what the city can afford to do at this time? And I know there are things that we need to get fixed, you know, and so is the plan in place, you know? What if we get here in May and water sewer is not doing what it's supposed to do? Then what? You know, and so I, you know, I'm not saying that we're just, well, I am saying, we need to be prepared for the worst, but I would like to see, and this is another reason why I'm asking for monthly reports, because we're on a lifeline when it comes to the city's finances, right? And so we just, we just need to know. I don't, I don't like to, as the Bible declares, as one beateth in the air. You know, our shotgun strategy, I like to have a rifle strategy to make sure I know what we're hitting.
I agree with you 100%. And first of all, the news has improved since the last time we talked because we were able to go to the Municipal Sales Tax Commission and identify right at $7 million of major maintenance work, which they agreed to fund. And so that, that took us from just over $3 million to just over $10 million, which brought us some breathing room. But the fact of the matter remains that, that the city council has authorized a total amount of revenues from the water and sewer system based upon a rate tariff, and we have not successfully executed the billing and collections based off of that rate tariff. So the first thing I have to do is get the system to work as it was designed to collect the rates that were already authorized. And my belief is that I can get that billing system turned around within this fiscal year. And it's, the thing that is a real challenge is, as we're working on this, as we prepare to work on this system, it gets worse by the day. And so even the plans that, that we, you know, started on, say, three or four weeks ago, the system has gotten worse by another thousand or more accounts not getting billed. And so with that, we've got a lot of work to do, but I think I've got a plan in place that I'm nearly final on, that can get this thing resolved and, and get our accounts back billed up to a nearly 100% amount, and that, but we're going to have to make arrangements, and we haven't made the determination yet, how long will we give folks to get their accounts caught up? But it's my expectation, within a year or two, we can get that caught up as well. But I agree that we're in the days now where we're going to have to not only monitor it on a monthly basis, we're going to have to monitor it on essentially a daily basis. Part of what I'm going to be expecting is a dashboard that allows me to track the performance of that system on a daily basis, because the way systems work, they're either under control or they're out of control, and they're either getting better or they're getting worse. And the one thing that you can be assured of is, if you're not watching it every day, it will get out of control and get worse. And so I have to have the metrics gathered together and delivered in the form of a dashboard so that I can monitor it on a daily basis so that it doesn't get away from me again. This is the second time, after the billing system was implemented, this is the second time that the system has spun nearly out of control. And my belief is, the patience of this community will not allow us to do that again. We have to get it under control and keep it under control.
The, I was just going to make a comment. This is a good discussion that we need to have. In the last month or so, I've had the opportunity to talk with federal officials, elected officials from both sides of the parties in Washington, and both of them, comments to me, as just a lowly councilperson, was that, that there's federal money out there, grant money that's available for us to address these problems, and we just have to be proactive, the city of Jackson has to be proactive, and go out there and pursue those monies that can help us solve these problems. So it's not a hopeless situation, which, if you just look at the, you know, the revenues we've got, it can be discouraging, but, but their guidance, and this is both from Democrat and Republican, was that we just need to be, you know, get our A-game out and go get the monies that are out there through the federal system in contract with grants.
Very much looking forward to that. The three things that are tying up my time right now are negotiations with Siemens to get the billing system fixed, the preparation for the negotiations with the EPA to get the consent decree modified, and the third is the negotiations with West Rankin to see if we can retain them as a customer. As soon as, and then the normal day-to-day operations, as soon as I get some relief on those issues, the first thing I'm going to do is go with my best A-game to make those requests.
I hear what you're saying about this system get worse from time to time. And when you make that kind of statement, in most people's mind, the question would be, what caused it to do good at one time and worse at another time?
Okay. The, what has happened is, the system was set up, they went live, and then there was a series of problems that accumulated till they had something north of 10,000 bills stranded. And then they came in and did an intervention where Siemens came and the other consultants from Origin Consulting and from Mueller came in and did a fix. And then they stepped away, and what ends up happening is, the system is highly complex. Some might use the term a Swiss watch, might think it's more temperamental than that, and it's more like an Italian sports car. And what happens is, this meter is generating an hourly reading and trying to communicate with us, and it's trying to communicate with a billing system. And if there's any discrepancy at all with any part of it connecting the metering system to the billing system, the billing system is set up to say, I don't have good information to bill off of, so I will not create a bill. Old-fashioned billing systems, back when they were written in things like Cobal to run on things like mainframes, generated one bill for every customer every month, and everything was done in, very carefully, in a batch system. So that if you had 4,000 accounts to be billed, you produced 4,000 bills. What happens now is, you go from a batch environment to a real-time environment where each meter is firing off a reading every hour. It seems like you should be able to go out and take 4,000 accounts, grab the last reading, create a bill, should be fairly simple. But what ends up happening is, when those hourly readings either don't come in, or they come in in such a way that it looks wrong, the system basically, imagine a camel that is overloaded, that camel squats down and will not get back up until somebody comes in and removes some of the load off of it. And so that's what I have to do, is bring the experts back in. The other thing is, I have to have better trained people and more trained people in my water sewer business administration office. You know, I'm down to about four billers right now when I need probably 12 or 15 billers. And so part of what I have to do is, I have to get them in, I have to get them trained, got to get them tested, and I got to get them to work. And so that's part of what I have to do. While Siemens is untangling the mess between the meters and the bills and get those bills released, I have to get billing personnel hired, trained, tested, and to work. And that's part of my strategy on that, is to take the, my supervisors out of the training business and take the training materials and work with one of the local colleges or universities so that they can take my new employees, train them and test them, and if they pass, deliver them to me ready to go to work and do that work that very next day.
Okay, sound good. I'll follow up.
About how long do you think it will take you to reach the point where you've got the 12 or 15 trained and ready to go? I know it's a desperate situation.
Actually, desperate situation is a young mom with hungry children. This is just business. And so, well, I appreciate the sympathetic remark, my belief is that this is just business, and this is something that we're paid to do and we're expected to do. But to answer your question, I'd like to answer it in global, which is, how long until I can sit here in front of you and say, all of the accounts are billed current? And my belief is that that will take somewhere between 20 and 24 weeks. Now, some of those will get caught up within the first four weeks, some will be caught up in weeks five through eight, some nine through 12. But my belief is that I'll be able to get this done. So, within five to six months. So then the question is about hiring the folks. I have signed through the authorizations to get them hired now, based off of vacancies that I had. Then I'm going to be adding some staff that are beyond what was budgeted, and I've got to get that paperwork through and all those authorizations through. But part of being in command of a situation like that is, you have to have a very detailed battle plan on how you're going to handle each part of that. And my belief is that some of those people will be hired in the next two to four weeks, and some will be coming in a little bit later than that, eight to 12 weeks. But part of it is the retention strategy. The, what we're paying for billing folks is not materially different than what they can get at any other entry-level job in the marketplace for full-time work. And so this is an area where we have a lot of turnover. One of the things that I believe is that some part of the retention strategy is based off of compensation, but some part of it is based off of the belief that people want to be on a winning team. And if you, for example, right now, the system, if it doesn't work right, generates something called a to-do, to go out and check this meter, or check this account, or do something like that. And our backlog of to-dos is borderline astronomical right now. And so with that, if people see that list, that backlog list of to-do growing by, say, 1,000 or 2,000 a month, and they're not making progress on it, that generates a sense of frustration, and frankly, a sense of hopelessness. And part of what I've got to do is install a culture that believes, no, 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 we're not going to let this get away from us, we're going to do whatever it takes to stay on top of this so that it doesn't get away from it. Because my belief is that everybody wants to be on a winning team. And so the first key to improving morale is create that winning environment. And part of that means sweating the details, getting things right.
Now, can we, there's a lot of talk out there all over the country now about workforce training. A lot of people's underemployed, no, not modern-day skills. Now, the billing system, or the system, new system, period, when it comes to our water We don't have trained people that's used to that type of work. Used to that type of work. Could we go through workforce training to get our employees...
Yes, that's...
...type of technical training?
Yes, I think that, first of all, my belief is that while this system is complex, it's not too complex for citizen employees of Jackson. This is doable. This isn't too much for them. But some part of what we need is the training that's on basic workforce fundamentals. And then some of it is just job-specific skills. And what I was talking about was the work that's needed on job-specific skills. And these are, anybody that can handle a standard office environment can be trained to run the system.
Okay. Councilman Lee, do you have anything?
Okay, Councilman Beck, follow one. If you all can just give me the high points of disagreement.
Which, which number is this?
This is 41, authorizing the murder execution agreement with MACE.
Okay, so the highlights of it, it is, I think there was an agreement in the past between the city and one of the administrations. So what this is, it includes a great deal of the prior agreement, but also some new things. It's incorporating in the employee handbook, as well as there will be a small letter of intent, a brief letter of intent, where they are still negotiating. The city right now is currently revising the personnel handbook. And so what they're agreeing, that once they reach an agreement there, that will also be, that will also be incorporated in the agreement that they're planning to execute.
The outlining functionality of MACE as far as with city employees, is that going to be in writing?
Yes, sir. What we are requesting is that they do certain things to notify the city in writing. For example, and I'm... city in writing. For example, and I'm coming off the top of my head, so please forgive me, is that the employee will have an application with the union, that will authorize them to participate and act on their behalf. For example, if someone has a grievance or wishes to file a grievance, then they will give the authority of the union to represent them. That way, the city would be covered. And should anything happen, that we will have prior notification as to that, that employee is represented by the union.
And, and thank you for that. I'm speaking more directly. If there's conflict between employee, or there's a grievance employee, and with what our handbook state, I know that MACE, their handbook can, what they have or what they provide us hasn't been updated since 1997. Are we requiring them to outline their procedures within their handbook, so that our personnel department will have that on file?
Yes, ma'am, one moment. Apparently, my vertical challenge is affecting the mic. So what was your question?
So, so basically, will we be requiring MACE to put together a handbook of their procedures, of how they will be dealing with grievances, of how they deal with things on their end, that the city is aware of? Instead, instead of it changing based on a case-by-case or situation-by-situation. I'm saying that because in the past, when there have been situations of grievances, then the procedure changed based on the case, instead of there's just being an outlining procedural book, this is how we handle these cases when they come to us. If said supervisor did this, and this grievance, this is how we do it. In 10 days, we got to communicate with the director of personnel. In 12 days, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da. That type of stuff. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, I'm not familiar with the prior process, but if this one is pretty much spelled out as to what they're saying that they want from the city, and what the city's requiring, what we're also requiring that's included in the agreement is that will still be held to the city's policies and procedures, as well as state and federal law. But it is spelled out as to a timeframe, as to when they're supposed to meet, and how that process is supposed to go.
Thank you for that. You know, I'm very familiar with personnel, very familiar with MACE and the city. However, I think that for our colleagues, if we're going to vote on something, if there's anything that's going to be proposed agreement, or anything that's going to be proposed procedure, I don't see it. I just see an agreement. But what is the agreement? So in the future, if you could provide us with that, that would be very helpful to let us have detail on what we're actually voting on. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. I'll see if we can have draft document for you tomorrow.
Okay, item 51, Councilman Banks.
Can anybody give me any enlightenment on where we are with that, out of JPD, with our forfeiture seizure funds?
A man prepared, that's what I'm talking about.
Jay Coleman, JPD. Basically, on the forfeiture seizure funds, it depends on if we have a joint operation with another agency. They've split it, I think it's like 20%, if it's five agencies involved. A person has to be found guilty before we can seize that. Property can't have a lien on it, like this car that's being paid, it's going to go back to that dealership, who's ever financing it.
Do we have currently any cash assets on our forfeiture seizure?
I believe we do. If I'm sure, we bought some tasers with a fortune for fund. I don't know the balance that we have, since we purchased those about a year ago.
Yeah. Could, could we provide, and I don't know, Department of Finance, if you have a balance of what they have in their forfeiture seizure account? You don't, you can bring, and let me tell you why that helps. There are conversations about body cams, and all those kind of stuff. And we know that with forfeiture seizure funds, that, you can't use it for pay raises or anything like that. But however, you can use it to purchase equipment. And I see my colleague Stokes has something on here for body cams. What would help that is, is knowing the amount of forfeiture seizure funds, and then prioritizing what equipment we need to get. You know, sometimes, I know in the past, they used it to buy laptops, and then after almost a year, they were tore up.
You got to pay for the maintenance, too.
Right, right, right. If you do, you got to pay for it. And I think that there needs to be more working together, that if you're going to purchase laptops, then somebody in Dr. Hatch's department should know that we just made this purchase, what is going to be the cost analysis to keep up the maintenance requirement. And I think that we need to just begin to make sure that we're communicating, right-hand or what the left-hand is doing. I would like to see body cams. I hope that will be a prioritization with whatever funds are left over in forfeiture seizure. I know that off of, of two seizures, after a year's time with House County Sheriff Department, we were able to buy body cams. But they're not even using now. Maybe you can go get them. But that's, that's something that I think will help build public confidence back in our police department. I appreciate the hard work you're doing. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And, Councilman Lenz, item 2.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This is an incredible list of properties. I cannot remember a time when so many were being presented, and I'm really thrilled to see this. Many of them are in Ward 7, and I know many of these properties, and we have spent a lot of time on these. And I want to, first of all, thank, I know this is a big team effort, and I just want to thank everyone involved in bringing this to us. I'm just real curious as to why, some of them date back to September 19th. Just wondering why that is, and the rest of them are more current. And then, then I also am curious as to where we are on collecting the liens and the fines that relate to derelict property.
Good afternoon. Kenner Davis, Community Bureau. The first question you wanted to know, these are actually resolutions. They are not what you would call like contracts. They're resolution. This is y'all voting on, the hearing officer's recommendation. And, and some of them are dated back in 2017, for some odd reason. We're that, we're that far behind. And if you noticed, that from the last couple of council meetings, you have seen a high amount of these, is because the clerical staff has been tasked with making sure we get them caught up. Because if they are not caught up, we can't move forward with a contract. Because we didn't have this voted on prior to even authorizing the contract. So what we're doing now is just making sure that we locating and identifying all the ones that are past, and there have been a lot. And there's still some past due to come. But I think, according to our ordinance, that we're supposed to be doing like five days after the hearing.
How, you said past due to come. How far, how far back do we go?
I would hate to have to answer that right now, Councilman, to be, to be exact, anyway.
What?
But we have made great strides in the last two months, because I think, you know, some of them-
And I appreciate that. Thank you for that. It really does affect our city and our neighborhoods tremendously, when we have a lot of blighted property out there. And I appreciate the work that's being done by all the departments that play a role in this, and all the people that play a role in this. So-
Thank you. Last question about the liens.
Where, where are we on the, yeah, where are we on collecting?
And we would have to come back before you all again for the liens, because that's the adjudication date. And-
I'm asking in a past tense standpoint, not future. I'm talking about-
Have we been-
Where, how, how are we doing on that?
Not as much as we want, but we have, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a whole lot. They're just not paying, you know, the fines, the liens.
Do you have any idea what the outstanding number is?
Not right offhand. We could, we could try to do some research to find out.
I would really like to know what that is. I really would. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Yeah, if you could, that would be helpful. Because I know that we do have a backlog. When I work extension services, extremely low backlog. So if you could provide, if he could provide a current backlog of how we are, and I guess so that we'll know financially what we might be looking at down the line, what that would, what that would cost us. And then also, just to say again, and we all had an opportunity, there are a lot of grants available. A lot of cities that I saw, they were getting grants to address blighted and dilapidated property. And, you know, I just don't think that that's the work that is just solely upon administration.